Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening for this December 16th meeting of the Hampton City School Board. I call this meeting to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
You're on mute, Mr. Samuels.
Just give me a thumbs up. Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Let the record show that all board members are present. Our next item on the agenda is item 1.02, Adoption of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
Do you want to make the motion that we adopt the agenda?
I have a motion from Dr. Woodhouse. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Banks Gray. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, the motion carries. The next item is the Consent Agenda. It consists of three items. 2.01 Personnel Report 20-18, 2.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of December 2nd, 2020, and 2.03 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations, December 2020.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Samuels and a second from Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, the motion carries. We now move on to Section 3 of our Agenda, Superintendent and Staff Reports. I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. At this time, Dr. Cagiano, our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Assessment, will introduce this particular presentation. The focus of it certainly is on building a literacy community, and we're happy to have members of his team who will provide an overview as it relates to the great work that's going on in Hampton City Schools, in particular as it relates to our literacy focus and efforts. And so at this time, Dr. Cagiano, please.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board, Dr. Smith. As Dr. Smith indicated, joining us this evening, we have Dr. Kelly Sito, our Curriculum Leader for English Language Arts, as well as Ms. Crystal Midlick, one of our Teacher Specialists for English Language Arts, to provide the board with an update regarding that particular content area. And I do, I guess before we go any further, want to thank those individuals for their leadership, you know, both, and you'll hear Dr. Sito this evening introduce some of the other members of her team who aren't with us online, but really for their leadership, not only this year, given the unusual and uncertain circumstances, but over the last several years. As you'll hear from some of the celebrations, Dr. Sito, where she was here this evening, due to a lot of the hard work over the last three to six years, the division put ourselves in a position that even receiving some recognition from some of the vendors that we work with. So this evening, you'll hear an update regarding some of the things we've had to, as the title of the PowerPoint indicates, reimagine regarding instructional models, assessments, how we provide professional learning and resources to teachers, to include communicating with parents as well. So Dr. Sito was here this evening, and at this time, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Dr. Sito. Dr. Sito?
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Smith. It is my pleasure to be here with you all this evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So this evening, as Dr. Cagiano shared, you will hear from both me and Crystal Midlick, who is one of our Elementary Teacher Specialists, and we absolutely had to look at our wonderful program that we were already providing in literacy and say to ourselves, with the supports that we provide from our department to all of our staff, how can we continue to uplift literacy in our community and in our schools on a daily basis? And so we really look at literacy through a 365-day lens of in-school and out-of-school time, and you'll hear this evening how we've continued to have that systems approach and that view alongside our community throughout the virtual learning that we've encountered this year. Our theme this year is Together We Can. We are a very collaborative department. We work with all departments, schools, community members, stakeholders, to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students and that all of our students become on-grade-level readers and writers and are career, college, and life-ready. And we know literacy is a core component of that. So this evening, you will hear high school updates, middle school updates, and elementary updates. And as I shared, our theme is Together We Can. And you will see throughout the presentation how we have used communication and unity and harmony, solidarity, integrity, and identity to uplift literacy at all levels, pre-K through 12th grade. And you will see how we have worked with many different folks to help this to occur for our students and our community. I would like to start tonight with our high school updates. Here on the slide, you see Ms. Jennifer Butler. She is our High School Teacher Specialist. She's phenomenal at her work. If you were to talk to any principal or staff member in the ELA departments at the high schools, you will see, you would hear how she is hands-on. She is there for them anytime that they call, and the supports that she provides gives them the tools and resources they need to meet the needs of their students. So this evening, you'll hear about the instructional model, progress monitoring, our Tier 2 programming, our digital writing portfolio, which we're really excited about in our third year, and our resources. What we had to take a look at was based upon the phase that we were going into with 100% virtual, what were those items that the teachers would want to have at their fingertips? Well, number one, they would want to know from us, what is the model? What does it look like when we have 60 minutes to support our students? And so what we did was we supported them by creating a whole group reading and a whole group writing model for them, so that they know during those minutes that they have, what are those best practices that are going to make sure that our students reach the level of mastery that they need on the standards of learning and are career, college, and life-ready? You can also see here that we built in social-emotional learning, which I'll talk more about on the next slide. We have worked to embed social-emotional learning through the work with Heather Peterson around the five competencies. And here, you just get a snapshot of the curriculum documents that we adjusted for this year because we knew that teachers were going to be working very diligently and in a different way to make connections and build relationships with their students. So we wanted to ensure that through the lens of literacy, that they were provided that time. And you can see here, here's an example of self-awareness and self-management, which goes with making connections, which is one of the power standards that we have in English Language Arts. And the first unit is about personal values, so that right away, teachers were able to hear from their students, what are things that they value in life? And I think that's such an important perspective that our high school teachers are able to get from our students. One of the other things that we did was we created not only the curriculum, but the teachers want to see, what does that look like in the classroom when I'm virtual on Zoom? And so what Ms. Butler did is she created, and I'll just show you a quick snapshot of this, she created a unit lesson plan, so that they could see, how would a week flow? Go back to the presentation. And the next slide, what I would like to show is not only did we look at it through the lens of instruction, but we know how important it is for our teachers to have data right at their fingertips that they can use to guide instruction. That's not just important in in-person learning, it's important also in our virtual learning. So what we did was we actually created a new assessment cycle at the high school level, and each of these are hyperlinks to the different progress monitoring charts. But tonight, what I would like to show you, really, I'll just show you the Grade 12 Progress Monitoring Chart, is that not only does it align with the power standards that they're teaching in the unit, we provided the assessment, the date range of when they would give it, but then what is also tested, because we want to make sure, as I shared, that the teachers are able to see, are my students mastering at the level that's expected, which means are they transferring? Are they able to apply it? And so we wanted to make sure that we did that. So this is a change across the board for high school, but for Grade 12, this is new for them because we included CSAs this year, because we wanted to be able to measure the career, college, and life-ready through the lens of our CSA Mastery Connect assessment. So that is the progress monitoring for high school. That's one portion of the work that we do for assessment. Also, we have our digital writing portfolio. We are in our third year. We created this from the ground up in collaboration with the IPL Department, with teachers, with administrators. We had so many folks that were involved as focus groups to help us create the digital writing portfolio. We know how important it is for our students to have a digital backpack when they leave Hampton City Schools and go off to career or college. And we said with writing, we want teachers and students to be able to see the growth that they have from 9th grade to 12th grade. So you'll see here on the screenshot that we have 9th, 10th, and 11th and 12th grade. So if I'm the 10th-grade teacher, I would be able to look at my student's 9th-grade portfolio, which would have four writings in that portfolio, and I would know and learn about my student prior to them even coming to my classroom. And then think about that if I'm a senior, I can look back and see my growth as a writer, and that's what writing is really about. It's about communicating and growing and learning your style of making your point and your communication come through to the reader. So we're really proud of the writing, digital writing portfolio and the work that we're doing with that. Luckily, we started it three years ago, and it's really helped us in the 100% virtual environment because our students were already using Google Classroom and Google Documents to do this work. So it was a really good transition for us at the high school level. Here are the resources. We wanted to make sure that in every aspect, that we provide a one-stop-shop for our teachers and our administrators to ensure that they have what they need right at their fingertips. And so we have a high school Google site where they have the models, the instructional priorities, the writing process, the release of responsibility, anything that they need to know about and be able to use to guide instruction and meeting the needs of their students. What we included this year is a Google Classroom. Since we knew the teachers were already familiar and using and would be using Google Classroom, we created Google Classroom that is connected with the ELA's Google site, so they have professional development right at their fingertips. They can watch videos. They can earn points. They can watch a webinar, and it all supports the balanced and comprehensive approach that we have to our high school English program. We also provide Tier 2 supports at the high school level. We have Read 180 at three of the high schools, and that program is to provide additional time for students that need opportunity to work on their standards of learning and just have, like I said, just additional time that they need to become an on-grade-level reader and writer. And then at Phoebus this year, we are piloting a program called Reading and Writing Exploration, and it is also to support the alignment to the standards of learning and identifying students that are almost there based upon their reading data and supporting them with becoming on-grade-level readers during that year. So that is our high school update. We've done a lot of work to ensure that teachers and staff and administrators have the materials and supports that they need for our high school students. You're going to hear very similar work at our middle school because we work very closely as a department, and we're very collaborative. Here you see Ms. Tracy Judd. She is our Middle School Teacher Specialist. She is outstanding, very organized, very thoughtful in terms of how do we ensure that those middle-school-age students are heard? How do we make sure that we are engaging them in the conversations and making sure that they're moving forward as readers and writers? And once again, you'll hear some of the same information regarding instructional models, resources, progress monitoring, support, and Tier 2 intervention. One of the first things that we had to do also here at the middle school level was look at Phase 1 virtual instruction and how many minutes, and provide these schools with how many minutes to ensure that we continue to have a comprehensive, balanced approach. We have to ensure that students are getting reading and writing on a daily basis. The other thing that we needed to ensure that our students were still getting small group instruction to move forward as readers, so that we could ensure that when they get to high school, that they were ready for the rigor of the English classrooms at the high school level. Resources. We had adopted StudySync as one of our resources. 6th grade was the first grade to start with it, and we had phenomenal results with that. And we were fortunate to be able to expand that this year to 7th and 8th grade using StudySync. It's an online platform with an access to engage with text and support in reading, and it has an outstanding gradual release process. And so we were able to utilize that to support a virtual curriculum, along with Literacy Pro, which is a new online platform where we have access to around 2,500 eBooks. Going into the virtual, we wanted to ensure that we were providing access to books for our students. We know how important it is that they read independently and that they have choice in what they read, and so Literacy Pro provided us with that resource. You will hear more about that from Ms. Midlick when we talk about this at the elementary level because we have Literacy Pro pre-K through 8th grade. So what we were able to do with this is these two resources we use in our curriculum, and I'm quickly going to show you what we were able to do. We wanted to make sure that the teachers had truly a virtual curriculum. So we took those resources and created Google Slides for each of the units by week. I'm not going to walk you through the whole thing, but I just wanted to show you that we have teacher and student-facing materials that were developed by our Teacher Specialists along with curriculum writers, who are teachers in Hampton City Schools. And we've been visiting the classrooms, and this has just been phenomenal to see the fidelity to the curriculum and how much the students are enjoying and engaging with their teachers around what the resources that have been provided. So not only do we have the learning intentions, but we actually have built in the resources, so teachers can just click on these different links, and it'll pull up what they need. Also, teachers are able to directly put these in their Google Classroom. So if I'm a 6th-grade student and I need to revisit the lesson for the day, I have it right at my fingertips. And we know that some of our students need the opportunity to be able to revisit. And so we've done this for kindergarten all the way through 8th grade. We have these Google Slides, and you'll hear a little bit more about that from Ms. Midlick at the elementary level also. We also have progress monitoring documents at the middle school level. You'll see here that not only do we have unit assessments that align with the standards of learning, but we also implement the Scholastic Reading Measure, which gives us the student's reading level, so we know if they're already advanced proficient or below grade level in terms of the reading. And then we use that data to support the balanced approach and the small group instruction. And we have that for every quarter. And then, as you saw at the high school level, here again at the middle school, we have an ELA site. And on the site, the teachers have everything that they need at their fingertips, from what is the model? Why do we have the model? What is a read aloud? There's videos that they can watch. There's professional development opportunities. And not only do we have that, but we have an ELA Middle School Support Site specifically for administrators, where they can, they can go and they can look at data, they can look at resources for their particular school, and then we also have professional development opportunities specifically that teachers can sign up for in terms of webinars and other virtual professional development. And as you all know, our professional development has been virtual and supports this year for all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And I'm excited to share with you that we were able to continue our Tier 2 supports at the middle school level also. Our program is called the Reading and Writing, it's called Reading and Writing Exploration. Ms. Anita Walker is one of our, she is a literacy specialist, and she has developed this, she curated it, and she coaches and supports the teachers that teach the class. And they, their resources, the resources that they use in terms of the Tier 2 supports, you see right here on the slide, and she curated that from the beginning all the way through. We've had such support with this over the past two years that we've started it, where we have students that are exiting the program mid-year and are now on-grade-level readers. And then we have another group who exit at the end of the year as on-grade-level readers. We are able to continue that in the virtual setting. Ms. Walker has worked to ensure that we have a pacing and the curriculum is able to support the virtual minutes that we have. And we're seeing really good results once again with our students because we do, as you see, have ongoing assessment that supports these students also. And the goal of the program is once again to ensure that students that are showing us that they just need that little bit of extra time to catch up, that we're providing them with that time. All right, well, I am now going to turn this over to Ms. Midlick. She is going to share the elementary updates with you in regards to Literacy Pro, progress monitoring, our instructional model, Google Slides, and then she'll turn it back over to me to share with you more information regarding our Tier 2 interventions and communication and several of the community activities and opportunities that we're providing to uplift literacy here in Hampton City Schools. Ms. Midlick?
Thank you, Dr. Sito, and good evening, everyone. I would like to also introduce my counterpart. I collaboratively work with Alisa Innes. So the two of us are the Teacher Specialists for Elementary, and we make sure that we are supporting all of our elementary schools, our administrators, our literacy leaders, and our teachers. So I'll be sharing similar information for elementary, as was mentioned, for middle school and high school, and then, like we said, we have some exciting updates at the end for the community partnerships. So we wanted to approach this year really with that uplifted feeling of we've got this, that we know students are engaged by great books. We know that they love to have voice and choice when it comes to writing, but we had to think about what does that look like in a virtual setting? And how do we make sure that we're still engaging our students? So we really had to revamp, and that's okay, because now we have amazing resources for our teachers that they can use every day as they're virtually engaging their students. So we did just want to include some examples of that, and it's been great just to see how writing has continued, that conversations are still happening, that great books are still being enjoyed. So it might look a little different, but it's still thriving in a virtual setting. So one of the first things we wanted to do was really make sure that resources were put in place so that we were supporting multiple levels. So we created an FAQ document to support implementation of our model, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, so that we had alignment all the way across. And then we also updated our elementary ELA site, similar to middle school and high school, and that's where teachers can go to get documents they need to find out about professional learning, and especially for small group resources, we have a lot linked there for them to use. And then this year, in order to support our literacy leaders, we implemented a Google Classroom. We meet monthly with our reading specialists, our literacy support specialists, and our interventionists to make sure that we have collaborative meetings, that we have that process of communication between us and the schools, and then also for professional learning. So through the Google Classroom, we're able to share all of those resources. That way, they can go back and review anything they might need. They can use it with their teachers, and so that really ensures implementation at all of our elementary schools. And then, as we mentioned, one of our new resources is Scholastic Literacy Pro. So this has provided an access to books no matter where students are, but as long as they have their device, they have access to eBooks. And the great thing was, it starts from a platform with an interest survey, so that books are really tailored to what kids like to read about. So they get to make choices, and even for our pre-K and kindergarten students, they can choose based on pictures, so that way they can pick the topics that they like or different areas where they want to find out more. And this can be accessed in-school or at home. So our teachers have been able to use Literacy Pro as part of our lessons for read-alouds or shared reading, and then for students, they can use it for independent reading, no matter where they are. And it's really helped for us to be able to work with students to set reading goals. And we also had assessments that could be used at multiple levels so that we could see how our students were growing as readers. So we have the reading readiness for kindergarten and first grade, which has those foundational early literacy skills, and then the reading measure, which was able to take the place of the reading inventory. So that really helps us to know students' lexile and how they're increasing in their proficiency. And then also, we have Think More quizzes, which show how students are applying comprehension skills. And when we recently met with the Scholastic Team, they were so excited to share that already our data is improving, it's on a positive trend, and they could not believe how many of our students have chosen to take Think More quizzes. These are not even required yet, they're just an extra option, and so many students are wanting to show what they're learning. And also, we wanted to highlight, we currently have over 12,400 students that are consistently using Literacy Pro. So this is their access to books, and this is their way to continue to read and to make choices about what they want to read and what they want to learn about. And then to highlight our Grade 3 students, in just eight weeks between their first administration of the reading measure and their second administration, we had 70% of our students that increased their Lexile score. So that's in just eight weeks. So we're excited to see how that increases over the school year, and just to see that as virtual learning is taking place, our students are growing as readers. We also have ongoing professional development that's provided by the Scholastic Team, so they actually created a pamphlet for us that anytime there are updates, new webinars, anything new, they make sure that we have that available at our fingertips and for our teachers as well. And then, similar to middle school and high school, we continued with our progress monitoring and our in-school. And then similar to middle school and high school, we continued with our progress monitoring and our intervention criteria. But we did need to make some adjustments just to make sure that this could be administered in a virtual setting. So you'll see that at the beginning of the year, we started with the reading readiness assessment for kindergarten and first grade, where normally we would have used the PALS back-to-school report. But because of the closure at the end of last school year, we did not have that information. So it was great that we had an assessment that we could use to get to know our students at the beginning of the school year. We have continued to administer PALS as it was recommended by VDOE and the PALS office. And then we also have writing continuing, and that's being submitted by students through Google Classroom or using their writing journals, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a few moments. And then within the RTI database, we've been able to consistently have a picture of our students and how they are progressing and to see how they're improving as readers and writers. So with that Scholastic reading readiness and the Scholastic reading measure, that information is there for our students as well as their PALS information and for students that are working within intervention on SIPs. So we have this information available so that teachers can see how their proficiency compares to those end-of-the-year goals and targets. And that helps to set reading goals with our students. And I'm actually going to turn it back over to Dr. Sito so that she can talk a little bit more in depth about SIPs and how she's been able to visit classrooms to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Midlick.
Oh, I'm sorry. First, we're going to talk about the virtual model. We are implementing, within our minutes as much as we can, trying to replicate what we saw within our classroom, but knowing that we have to keep students engaged during that time when they're online. So it was very important that we maximize the time that they are with their teacher online. And during those virtual whole group sessions on Mondays through Wednesdays, they're utilizing Google Slides, which we'll take a look at in just a second. And then we also implemented a Flex Day on Thursdays. And that's an opportunity where teachers can meet with students in small groups or have individual reading or writing conferences. They can review information that may not have, if they had a point in the week where they need to go back and review a concept, they have time to do that. And then we have virtual small group sessions happening every day, Monday through Friday. We also have opportunities for remediation and students can work with our other literacy staff, our reading specialists, interventionists, to ensure that their needs are met. And those whole group lessons, we have created within Google Slides. So this is something that we took our traditional curriculum and we implemented it so that every day, teachers can use these slides to teach from. And as we mentioned, they can also be shared out in Google Classroom. So we have read aloud lessons planned, we have shared reading lessons planned, and we have guided writing. So teachers have everything that they need at their fingertips. And this has really helped to make sure that we have consistency, not only across grade levels, but across schools. And it ensures that we have that reliable and valid instruction and assessment and that students are really having that opportunity to see those great books, that great literature, and to have those opportunities to write. And we have assessments embedded within those as well. So our minutes are being used, split between whole group and small group. So kindergarten does have a slightly different schedule. They are utilizing about twenty-five minutes for a read aloud with guided writing instruction and then about twenty minutes for a concept of word lesson. And this will segue as the students progress through the year. So when we move into January, this will shift more into read aloud and shared reading. But we know that that concept of word is so important for our kindergarten students. And then they do have those two twenty-minute small groups. And that's where teachers can really work on alphabet recognition, phonemic awareness, phonics, and those individual needs with students. And then for grades one through five, they have that structure of about twenty-five minutes for read aloud or shared reading and twenty minutes for a guided writing lesson. And again, twenty minutes in small groups. And we are encouraging at all levels that we have movement, that we have involvement and engagement from our students. And we're seeing that as we visit classrooms, that students are still engaged, they are still part of the process, that discussions are happening, they're entering answers into the chat box, they're moving to answer questions. So it's exciting to see that. And then we also wanted to be very purposeful about incorporating social emotional learning. So knowing that our students are in a very different situation than they normally would be, we want to have the check-ins to see how are students feeling, how are they doing as they start their morning or start the afternoon with their teacher. We really do encourage that those check-ins happen and that students have those opportunities to speak up if they need to, to share, to really show that empathy and understanding for each other. And there are great opportunities within books to do that. They can connect to characters, they can connect to themes. So that's been very purposefully embedded within our curriculum to ensure that that's happening. And then probably one of our most exciting resources and one that we've heard the best feedback about, we made sure at the beginning of the year that all students had a handwriting workbook and a writing journal. And we had so many requests from teachers, we need more, we need more, they've filled up their journals. So teachers are using these every day, students are writing in them every day. And we're getting pictures of students wanting to show off their writing and show their illustrations that go along with it. So this was something that was such a positive. And we already sent another shipment to our schools so that students have more to keep writing as the school year goes on.
Yes, absolutely. And once again, that was a collaboration with our outstanding HCS print shop. They've just been phenomenal with working with us on that. And then we've also, with Ms. Midlick and Ms. Sherry Drake, have created read alouds because we know that our students need access to hearing great readers read. And so they have spent the time making videos of themselves reading aloud. And those are also shared. And all teachers and all students and families have access to that. So here, we wanted you to also see the outside-of-school resources. So we provided the in-school resources for teachers, but also the outside-of-school time resources that are right there at the students' fingertips through Google Classroom that they can use their Chromebooks to watch and enjoy. And not just by themselves, they can do it as a family. We also have our reading interventions, thank you, Ms. Midlick. We also have our reading interventions at the elementary level through our PALS grant. And our core resource that we use by our early reading intervention assistance is SIPs. And it's a systematic implementation of phonics and phonological awareness and sight words. And this is being provided on a regular basis still. We've been able to work with our outstanding administrators, our literacy leaders in the buildings, Dr. Owens and her team, to ensure that we were able to have these minutes for our students. It's so vital that we are ensuring that we are catching up our students that are showing that they are below grade level. And this intervention does provide us with that time. And literacy staff, special education teachers, ERIA's, reading interventionists and literacy support specialists are all working hand-in-hand together to make sure that all of the students that need the support are getting it on a regular basis because we know intervention has to be consistent and the duration has to be appropriate. And SIPs provides us with the right best practice resource. There is a video here, I'm not going to show it due to time, but if you click on here, it is a video of one of our reading interventionists modeling what SIPs looks like so that our, virtually, so that there was an easy transition. Ms. Lynette Munn supported alongside one of our other reading specialists in creating Google Slides that are student-facing materials that our ERIA's can use. So you can see how we've taken the core of the work that we've done and we've been able to say, this is what it needs to look like, sound like, and feel like in a virtual setting and provide those resources for our staff. And we've been very fortunate, as Ms. Midlick said, we are seeing a very positive trend for our students. And as Dr. Cagiano shared, the foundation that we've set over the past three to six years has really put us in a great place. We know how important our families are and family communication is vital. We don't want that to change just because we're virtual. So we have worked with our department and Dr. Cagiano and several others, several others to create a reading progress report letter. These letters will go home in January and they will explain to the family how their child is doing as a reader. So you can see here, first part of it is just a letter explaining how important it is that our students and our families are involved with their child's reading progress and we want them to be involved. And here you can see that this shows the child's overall score on their fall PALS and it explains to them what is a score that shows that the student is on grade level or below grade level. And then here, it would explain what stage of reader. And I'll show you on the next slide what we mean by that. So there's a lot of different terminology that's being used, but we don't want to use with literacy, that we don't want to just use with families. We truly want them to understand. So we created this document to go along with the letter. So I would know, okay, well, my child is on grade level in first grade, so they're a beginning reader. What does that mean? That means my child is learning to read. They know some sight words. They use a variety of strategies to figure out words. Reading is easy if the books are familiar, so repetitive books. But then, they also can see, well, then where's my child going to go after this beginning reader stage? So which would be transitional. And then it explains that to them also. And then basically, we say to the parents and the families, you know, how can you help your child? Just read with them every night. And that's where Literacy Pro comes into play because we wanted to make sure they still had the books at their fingertips to be able to do that, to support their child. So not only do they get the information from the letter of where their child is, they get to understand what that truly means. And then they can follow up, the teachers can follow up with the families or vice versa to continue to support the child in their reading life, which is very important. So one of the other things that is huge in our community and we have so much support and has grown over the time that we've started it, is called Hampton Reads One Book. And it's phenomenal. We've had sponsorship, sponsorship from Old Point National Bank over the past three years of this program. And we have a fall and a spring book club where all of our students, pre-K through fifth grade, are all reading the same book together. And it's just phenomenal. The Mayor's Book Club have been phenomenal partners in this so that we could ensure that we were including our pre-K students and also volunteers who read for us and do all those types of things. And then, Community Nights, we wrote a grant and they awarded us a grant to help us get the books and purchase the books. So it's just been phenomenal. We have a literacy community committee that works on several things. And this year, what's really cool that they created is this is an interactive family guide. So families together can read the chapters, listen to it read aloud, read it aloud together, either way that they want to do it. And then they could participate together because we had the trivia questions here for them, the chapters right here. And it's been phenomenal. Dr. Smith has been in every one of our first chapter videos. And in this one, there was such a great surprise at the end for the students when he was finished reading Freddie Ramos. But it's been a phenomenal program for our community. And here you can see that we have a class whose teacher is talking to them about one of the trivia questions and they drew pictures to go along with what they thought the answer was for the trivia question, which is phenomenal. And then here, when you have a moment, there's a video of a student telling us his favorite part of Freddie Ramos. And he sent this video to me so that I would know what his favorite part was. But this is a live video of Wilder. Just seeing that smile on his face and I had to send him back a video. And I would definitely be meeting Wilder when I get a chance to. But that's just one story. There are so many stories to Hampton Reads One Book. And I will tell you, the community has uplifted this program in literacy and it's just been phenomenal. And sharing that, this is something new that we started. So we've had Hampton Reads One Book, we've been able to continue it throughout the pandemic. But we have wonderful teacher librarians who said, we don't want our library books sitting on these shelves, we want them out in the community. And they shared that idea. We have a lead teacher librarian, Karen Soder, who has taken the lead on this along with several other teacher librarians who've led different quadrants. Our transportation department has been phenomenal, Kelly Gores' department has been phenomenal, everybody. And right away, Dr. Smith supported this as soon as the idea came to his desk. And you can see here, the pictures of Buster's Book Bus. He is out in the community. We've had three so far. And what it is, is that we load up books from, this is elementary, all the way through high school, that can be checked out by our Hampton City School students. And we go into the neighborhoods. If they can't come to us and we can't get the books in the schools to them, well, we're going to take it out into the neighborhood. And that is what we've done. And it's been phenomenal. You can see here how much fun it's been, all the families coming out and supporting that. This past one that we had on December eleventh, that was, we went not only into the neighborhoods, but we talked with our partners at Kroger and we had all four buses meet in the Kroger parking lot in separate areas. And it became like a library. So families could come together and look at the different books, at the different buses, and check those books out. We've had thousands of books checked out, that is phenomenal. So not only did we have Literacy Pro, but we have our teacher librarians getting books in the hands of our students, which is so important. So really, truly, all together, we've done this work and we couldn't do it without the support of everybody. And we wanted to end with this slide that we will keep striving, we will keep thriving, whatever comes our way in Hampton City Schools because we do it together. And we thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sito and Ms. Midlick. Do I have any comments or questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels. You're on mute, Mr. Samuels. Mr. Samuels, you're still on mute.
Okay, I'm having some issue on muting. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I do apologize, Chairman Kilgore. But I just want to say to Dr. Sito, this is just fantastic, a fantastic report. And so I have two questions. The first one, the first question, Dr. Sito, are you still utilizing the seven pillars approach for the elementary grades?
Yes, so we are still using the seven strengths when it comes to looking at the SEL component. So they are attached to different read alouds. So thinking about kindness, friendship, curiosity, all of those things, absolutely, yes.
Okay, great. And my second question relates to the Literacy Pro. So it's my understanding that kids, students complete an assessment when utilizing the Literacy Pro. So if that is correct, I believe, so once they complete the literacy assessment, that will determine the type of books that they're interested in. And so are those books culturally relevant to a particular student? Can you explain that, please?
Absolutely. So yes, one of the things that we looked at when we were selecting Literacy Pro was, were there diverse multicultural texts? And so what the students do is they fill out the survey. And not only do they fill out the survey that then says, you know, what, I'm interested in these topics? And not only do they fill out the survey that then says, you know, when I'm interested in these topics. But what ends up happening is um they are able to also choose what books that they want. So the teachers actually go in and expand the amount of books that they're able to have access to. But absolutely, that was a huge part in the decision process. And Ms. Midlick actually presents um with uh presented um actually with Olivia Hassan. From the Hampton um Library, Hampton Library. On um ensuring diverse multicultural text access. Absolutely. Thank you for asking.
And thank you. I believe that is so important as you know, you and I have had conversation in the past, how important it is for children. When they're reading texts to see um characters and individuals that look. Like them, sound like them and behave like them. So I think that is so important. Thank you so much for that work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do I have any other board members that have questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Mason.
Yes, just a couple of quick comments. Ex- excellent job, Doc Sito to you and your staff. Um I I love the way you all incorporate the social emotional learning piece into uh what we're doing as far as the reading piece. That's one of the things, Dr. Smith, I always comment in terms of what we're able to do in Hampton City Schools, the way that the division. We don't just look at a program and just go for it. We find a way to make it a part of the culture. And we look at these types of things. It's great to see that across the board that this is being woven into everything that we're doing. Um and the stuff that Heather Peterson is bringing into the into the division and with this whole social emotional learning piece. I think that's where we're gonna see a lot of return on investment for our students as well as our staff. Um also, the family communication piece, that that is, that is just awesome, especially being able to identify. And show the families where their students are as far as the reading levels. Where do they go from here? You know, this is where they are. This is where they'll be, you know, and it gives them an idea of this is what we're doing so they can actually see and it's something tangible. So that that's a, you know, one thing I wanted to to add. And then I I just love Buster's Book Bus. That that that's, that's really neat. Um I I just think back to the days of, you know, during the summers when I was a kid, we had the bookmobile that would come out from. From the library and we had an opportunity to to check out books and and things of that nature. And so I think that that's. That's absolutely awesome, especially given the time period that we're in right now during this pandemic pandemic. Giving our students an opportunity to still embrace reading. So thank you very much for all of the work that you're doing, Dr. Sito and to your staff. So keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Any other comments, board members? I can't see. Yes, Ms. Cherry.
Yes, um thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say a special thank you to Dr. Sito and to Ms. Judd. And Ms. Midlick and that entire team for the wonderful work they've done. Uh Dr. Sito, you and I have talked um at different times throughout the years about the importance of that whole language arts piece. And how that truly is a foundation of everything academic. Because regardless of how well you know a subject, if you can't explain the subject, if you can't effectively talk about the subject. If you can't effectively write about the subject, you may be on the losing end of a situation. I just um text Dr. Smith um a couple of days ago. Um after seeing Dr. Smith do a presentation um to the city council. And I was talking about, you know, just those wonderful communication skills. He's a born communicator. Everybody isn't. But um you know, he's one of those people who can just draw um a subject out of a bag and speak effectively on it. So I'm glad that we have a s- situation in Hampton City Schools. Well, we're trying to do that with all of our students to make sure that they can, and I know this isn't a popular. Um way of describing things now, but but so that they can speak the King's English, so to speak. Um I know we have a lot of um, for instance, the word they. I don't know where they has come from all of a sudden. It has completely, it has completely replaced the word they are, the possessive they are. So it's they kids. And I know you've heard it, Dr. Sito, and they parents. And so, you know, that's not hip, that's not slang, that's just poor English. Um it's not ain't and gonna like which I think are just slang. But I I wanted to ask you in looking at your high school piece. Where and you talked about the digital writing portfolio. You you spoke to an example where a tenth grade teacher. Can look at the work of a ninth grade student before that student even comes into his or her class, correct? Okay, question is to to ascertain what?
Yes, absolutely. So what they'll be able to do is look and see. How the student is communicating based upon the expectations. Are they already communicating um effectively, clearly? Um but also, not only that, but you can learn so much about a student um through their writing. But they'll look through it, they'll see their composing abilities, their written expression abilities, their usage mechanic abilities. But also, they'll learn a lot about the student and their writing because we're really working. To ensure that we're looking at writing through the lens of being an effective communicator.
Right.
And so we really want the teachers to also look at it through that lens. I'm not just looking at this paper to mark it with red ink or, you know, look at it for um. Only grammar purposes and things along those lines. We want them to look at it through the lens of helping the student become a stronger communicator. Um through their writing. And yes, they do need to use proper grammar. So yes, we still have to ensure that we're teaching that. Um because, you know, it's very important for them to understand that if I'm writing. A text message to my friend, that's one thing. If I'm writing an email to someone that I'm um trying to apply for a job. I'm gonna write in a professional way. So that's what we're looking at it through that real life um uh component. So that is really for the teacher to be able to see where the student is. And help them grow from there. Cause all of our students are also on a continuum as a writer. And so we want our English teachers to really continue to enhance those communication skills.
Right. Okay, and I'm I'm glad to hear you say that therefore the teacher can make a determination on what he or she needs to do. To help the student become even a greater communicator. And um I think that's, in fact, I know that's very important. I don't know if Ms. Bain is even in this meeting. Um tonight, but one of the things that Ms. Ann Bain and I used to do when I was in the system. Is um she knew, and this is, this speaks to the piece that you're talking about, the proper English. She knew that when the word myriad we was used, it meant many. So you would say there are myriad opportunities. But she also knew that I would say there are myriad of opportunities. And she'd look at me, but I'd also look at her when people would use the word um irregardless, because it wasn't a word. And so, but I also knew that if I were going for an interview. Or if I was speaking to some legislators, or if I was speaking to the faculty and staff, I knew how to use the word myriad. So I'm glad to see that your bottom line is making sure that they're great communicators, regardless of the words that they use. And the second piece, which is the last thing, is what are we doing in terms of vocabulary expansion? And I ask that because um I remember years and years and years ago, when my mom was on the steps with one of my grandkids. There was a plane coming past and my mom said, look, it's going up and up and up. And my granddaughter said, no, it's ascending. And so what I've done in terms of vocabulary expansion. For every child I've known, I've ordered, and I'm not doing an ad for Amazon, but that's where I saw it. I ordered this, uh it's a pu- uh crossword puzzle book. And it's called Easy Crossword Puzzles for Smart Kids. That's the title. And it's age appropriate, depending on the age. So if there's a line that says going up and up, the answer may be ascend. So the question becomes, what are we doing for vocabulary expansion?
Absolutely. Well, I will let Ms. Midlick start and then I can go from, go from there.
Okay, fine. I think I saw her shaking her head when I asked the question.
I know she's excited to share.
I am, uh especially for our K two students. We have worked uh over the past year to really start implementing more. Um and integrating more with the social studies and science curriculums. So that's one way that we're using content vocabulary, which I, when you said that you had, you know, a young student using the word ascending. I would say we see this the most powerfully in kindergarten classrooms. Because once they learn a word like that, they want to use it, they're so proud of themselves, they're so excited. But we are purposefully integrating that vocabulary. So if they're learning about economics, they're learning what it means to be a producer or a consumer. They're learning about scarcity, they're learning about what it means to barter and trade. And they're using that in their writing, they're reading about it in the books that they're using during read alouds and shared reading. So that's been something that has been integrated even in our youngest grades. It was already occurring in third, fourth and fifth grade. We wanted to make sure that our youngest students were doing it as well. And then we're very, very careful with every read aloud or shared reading lesson. We purposefully choose vocabulary. And for that purpose of expanding vocabulary that they use. So if we have something that we are used to hearing, the word nice or the word kind. We're gonna talk about synonyms and antonyms and make sure that students are hearing and using and applying other ways. For those common words to expand their vocabulary and get that into their writing as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other comments? Uh yes, Mr. Karnak, our student representative.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Uh first of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Midlick and Dr. Sito for being here. Uh I am very glad to see a few things. Number one, that social emotional learning is being implemented on the curriculum side. It's one thing to see that in uh the climate and culture presentation. Um it was excellent to see it there and it's excellent to see it now from the departmental viewpoint versus the the. Whole climate and culture department viewpoint. Uh and so my question is regarding the high school matrix setup. It is on slide five, I believe. And so I'm seeing it broken down into whole group reading, that thirty thirty. Um whole group writing, again, thirty thirty. So um my question is, is that? The way that's set up, is that the first day you have English in a week, that's whole group reading and then the second day, that's all whole group writing? Or is it uh a mix of both for each day? Uh how does that, how does that uh translate?
Great question. So um with the one hundred percent virtual. Um we did have to make an adjustment. Typically, reading and writing occur daily because they're reciprocal processes. But when we spoke to teachers and curriculum writers, um what would it look like? They said for their students that for the hundred percent virtual, it would be helpful to do reading with word analysis. Which uh word analysis, um you're breaking down words, you're learning words, you're um not only just figuring out. You know, how they all work, but you're figuring out the meanings of them. Um so you're getting that language comprehension with it. Then on the second day, um with the writing, they're getting the shared writing experience. Um along with the grammar. Um however, what we've said to the teachers is, please remember, you know. The word analysis should also be applied in the students' writing. So the teachers are doing a really good job. Figuring out that cycle and making sure the reciprocal process doesn't get loo- get lost in any way. But that's a great question. So as of right now, the model is um, you know, one day reading, one day writing. Um and then, you know, teachers are working to ensure that that reciprocal process is still seen in the classroom.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Karnak. Uh any other comments? Yes, Ms. Banks Gray.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Sito, you and your team. Um and kudos to you all. For um the integration of the social and emotional learning. That is, that is a huge step. Um in the academic level. I'm gonna echo what Mr. Karnak just said. That is an amazing um seat to see that happening. I do want to know though, if you all are soliciting um feedback from the teachers to see. Um their thoughts and their responses uh from their young people um with that integration. Just to see if this is being effective, um are they not really understanding what they're trying to uh what they're receiving from this um SEL. Um this particular platform and just to see if this um having in a, any type of positive effect on our young people. Um that's one, uh just a quick question. And then also just kudos once again on all of the resources, the digital um writing. Portfolio, the family communication tool and Buster's Book uh Bus, that's amazing. Meeting our young people where they are in the community, that's amazing. But I would like to know a little bit more information about the um SEL. If we are getting some feedback from our teachers.
Yes, and I can start with the secondary piece and then um Ms. Midlick can share for the elementary, but absolutely. Um so what we do is we're visiting classrooms, um we go virtually to CLTs. Um and planning and during those times, um when we visit, we get to see it ourselves. See how the students are responding to how we've integrated the SEL pieces. Is it really coming to life? And then when we're working with the teachers, we get to ask them, you know, what are you hearing from the students? Are you seeing, you know, this unit actually helping you build um the relationships? Are they sharing their personal values with you? Is it a good place to have it? Are we right, asking the right uh essential question? Are we, you know, do they, they feel like they're flowing with the um the self-awareness piece, which they should have seen in their writing? So we're asking some of those stark questions for them. And the answer that we've gotten is. If they were to cut out the beginning part that starts out their day. That's focused on the essential question and the self-awareness piece and the talking component, their students will tell them, you've missed a part of our day. So we know the students are, that's, that's the big thing. When our students are telling the teacher, hold on, I know we have other things to do. But we can't miss this part. We know that it's really important.
I love it.
So that's, that's part of our evidence at the um secondary level.
And I'll echo that at elementary. It has been, to see it is to believe it. So when I'm in visiting classrooms, I get to see it. I get to see students so engaged and involved and really sharing about themselves. Understanding each other. And it has become really part of the culture within classrooms. So we're creating classroom cultures within this virtual bubble, which is pretty magical. And I think it pairs so well with class meetings, which we also have at that elementary level. So many times that allows teachers to either have that before or after that time. So they really are getting to expand even further that this was something that we read about or we wrote about. And now we can talk about it a little bit more during a class meeting. So we're often giving them that jumping off point. And then they can carry that into a class meeting and it's, it's pretty neat to see.
Fantastic. Thank you, ladies. I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks Gray.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Again, thank you, Dr. Sito and Ms. Midlick for a a great presentation. It was very comprehensive. And uh thank you, Dr. Sito, to your entire team uh for all they do for our students in Hampton. Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, um Mr. Chair. Uh Dr. Sito, I think that that presentation was an excellent presentation. Uh many of the questions that I had, as I was writing them down, you were answering them as the pro- as the pro- as the presentation was going along. Uh so thank you so much. I did have, um I was very interested in the letter that goes out to the parents. And if there is any um extra uh help that can be given. To the parents to help the students. You understand what I'm saying? And then you mentioned uh the special education uh essential help that they're getting. And could you tell us some of the uh essential help that they're getting also?
Absol- absolutely. So um and Ms. Midlick, feel free to jump in. Um but um are, we work very closely with the special education department. Um we have worked with them um very closely to look at, okay, this is our progress monitoring document. Um what information do they need additionally? Um so they actually have a program that they've created from the ground up called DSDI. It is um an Orton Gillingham approach. It's a phonological, it's an early literacy foundation program. So students that are missing um alphabet knowledge where their sound and letter correspondence. Or they're having trouble with decoding words, like being able to read and those types of things. They've created a whole program to um support that and that occurs during small group. Um so students actually get that written into supports for them. Um in terms of their individualized education plans um to support that. So it's an additional um supplement that they get um to our core instructional program. So that is a whole program that's written and all of our literacy staff have been trained in the program also. Not just the special education teachers, but our reading specialists, our reading interventionists and our literacy support specialists. All have been trained. But our reading specialist, our reading interventionist, and our literacy support specialist all have been trained in it to ensure that we can support. From all um, all angles, our students who um, need additional support to being on grade level. Because our goal is all of our students um, becoming um, on grade level readers. That enjoy reading and it becomes a life, lifelong enjoyment for them. And so. Um, so that's one answer for this special education students, support that we provide for them. Um, when it comes to the letter. Um, absolutely, in the letter, we have um, explained where. The uh, the student who is getting additional services, because they should, if they're not reading on grade level, we have that provided in the program. This is how that works. The fa- uh, the, the teacher informs the parent, the family member, the caregiver. Um, of what intervention the child is getting, and then they explain it to them. So we also use it as a conference tool. So we've provided that too for, for the teachers to be able to do so. Um, uh, Ms. Midlick, did you wanna add anything else? Okay. I did, did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. You know, we're ahead of the game, even compared to what's going on on the South Side. Hampton is way ahead of the game, uh, when it comes down to our services to our students and, you know, special education students. And even our parents. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Anything else? All right. Again, thank you, Dr. Sito and Ms. Midlick for the excellent presentation.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
You too.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that concludes um, superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we now move on to section four of our meeting, which is the hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. We have two uh, recorded uh, comments from the public. So I, I know those meet our protocols and time requirements, so we will forego reading the protocols. And I will uh, ask Ms. Bowers if she will play the recordings.
Okay, here's the first one.
My name is Wendy Hazel. My address is twenty-three oh five Shell Road, Lot twelve, Hampton, Virginia. And I, it's relevant that I speak here tonight, because I was born and raised in Virginia. And being a mother of two children that are still in school, you know, I, I just, I must say. What kind of mother would I be if I didn't react to what the schools of Virginia are trying to teach my children? When it comes to politics, religion, family values and beliefs, and racism. These are taught at home, not in the classroom. I am my children's protector. I am their role model. What the teachers are doing is unacceptable. I decide when it's time to discuss politics, religion, family values. And beliefs and racism with my children, not a second grade teacher or a sixth grade teacher. You know, they should teach science, math, gym, language arts, American history, et cetera. My children can't even vote. And these teachers have crossed the line. They will not be my children's political advisor. I pray to God that every mother, father, grandmother, and grandfather hears this. Please pay attention to what they are teaching our children. Pay special attention to the history class, because. All of our American history matters. When this year is over, twenty twenty will not just be remembered for the year that our statues and monuments came down. It will be remembered for people like me, standing up to protect our children's American rights. Their birth rights and their freedom of speech. It's about our children's own opinions and their own beliefs, what they value. You know, our children's education matters. And I'm here to protect my children's rights. I would also ask that the school board take into consideration changing. The school names of Virginia. Take the names of a person off. And only name the schools after the area that they are in. I ask this to be done because every school is supposed to be inviting for every child. So they feel like they can get the best education that is offered by that school. And having schools named after individuals, just to satisfy certain groups of people, that's not inviting. Don't leave certain groups of our children out. Change the names of our schools so that every child feels welcome. And I'd like to leave you with my last thought of a possible mandate vaccination for public school children. A vaccination that could be forced upon my children. My family and I wanna make it perfectly clear that this is not gonna happen. Don't think that we are not praying every day for God to help us. Because we pray for our children and our next generations always. Thank you for letting me speak.
Here's the second one.
Hi, my name is Tammy Hugate. My address is seven nine four six Redmond Road. Norfolk, Virginia, two three five one eight. I'm seeking attention in this meeting because I have nieces and nephews in your school system. I have a grandson in this system. With all this vaccination talk and the governor's input, I have become weary of the. Competence of those who handle my family's younger generation. I am here to implore you to stop and reflect. What it will mean to the future generations. If you continue to allow the indoctrination of evil to inflict their will upon the children. Please think about what it will mean to not just those children and their families. But you and all your families and children's souls. Please do not stand by and allow this evil to pressure the future generations. Please, please find it in your hearts to not stand by while the evil continues. Please stand up for the future generations. Please stand by the Constitution. As we have paid all of you to do. Please keep this in your utmost consideration. Of, you know, for the future generations of America. We have already fought this war. Please. Don't allow it to continue into the future generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We now move on to section five of our meeting, items for action. We only have one item on the agenda this evening. It's our local plan for the education of gifted students. Do I have a motion to approve the plan?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the uh, plan for the education of our gifted children.
I have a motion by Dr. Mason and a second by Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Cherry. Aye. Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is uh, for information in our next meetings. Our next meeting is going to be January twentieth, uh, if possible, at Jones Magnet Middle School. I will say that uh, that's uh, still up for a potential change. But uh, as it stands right now, it is scheduled for Jones. Um, but we will see as we get into the month of January where things are. Uh, and then we move on to informational items. Um, and I will uh, start with you, Dr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh, and members of the board. Um, I have three informational items uh, to share uh, this evening. Number one, just to share that tomorrow, we look forward to our legislators uh, joining us for Take Your Legislators to School Day. Um, they will virtually uh, visit some of our classrooms, and so we are excited and look forward to. Uh, the members of the school board who are able to participate as well. The second item in terms of information, I would like to remind uh, the board and our community that winter break for Hampton City Schools will begin. For our students on Monday, December the twenty-first, and go through Friday, uh, January uh, the first. I know a lot of excitement in the air for our young people. Um, our winter break shutdown will occur during the same time period uh, for our teachers and all staff. And uh, upon our return on Monday, January the fourth. Uh, our teaching and learning will be one hundred percent virtual for uh, two consecutive uh, weeks following winter break. Uh, these dates include um, Monday, January the fourth through Friday, January the fifteenth. Uh, school and offices will be closed on Monday, January the eighteenth. Uh, to observe Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, and we're scheduled to return to our hybrid in-person instruction on Tuesday, uh, January the nineteenth. Um, and certainly, um, the third item is, um, as we begin to consider uh, returning. Uh, additional grade levels to our hybrid in-person model. Uh, we will communicate to staff, students, and families no later than Friday, January the fifteenth. Um, of our plans in this particular regard. Also, we will provide to families and teachers. Uh, with a follow-up questionnaire uh, during the week of January the fourth. Finally, uh, happy holidays to uh, each of you, as well as to our families and the community as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the school board.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. Uh, do I have any informational item from board members? Or, oh yes, ho- okay. Uh, Ms. Cherry. You're on mute, Ms. Cherry.
And you know what? I see that red light. Okay, um, thank you again. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, earlier this week. Um, fellow board member, Ms. Tina Banks Gray, and I had the opportunity to attend the Third Annual. App Challenge Program, which is sponsored by um, Congressman um, Robert, Bobby Scott. Um, it is um, an app challenge program that involves all, what, three hundred and eight members of Congress. And they all hold their own um, app challenge program, and of course, ours is for the third district. And at that um, event, Ms. Banks Gray and I were very, very excited to see that. So many members of the Hampton City Schools students were there in terms of. Their applications being submitted and explained, and, and they just did a phenomenal job. And in the end, um, we had a winner. Actually, from Bethel High School, um, David Goodwin and um, his fellow classmates. Um, I don't have all the particulars, but I do know it was a Pathway Finder app that they were able to put together. And the teacher, Ms. Kim Coleman, was there and very excited about the win. So. Dr. Smith, if you can pass that on, you and I had talked about it through email. Pass that on to Ms. Kelly Gore. I'm sure we can give them some kudos.
Thank you for sharing this one.
Very, Ms. Banks Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. Sure, I'm there. So I know we've had a challenging year this year, but with all that being said, we are still here. Thank God. And um, from um, me and my household, I would like to wish our entire Hampton City Schools family. Peace, health, happiness, and prosperity in the coming year. Um, may the spirit of gratitude gently warm our hearts and homes as we. Um, see the cherished thoughts and memories of um, this season come into play. And best wishes for you all and a wonderful holiday and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you very much. Very well said. Any other informational items from board members or from our student rep? Mr. Karnak, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, first, I would like to acknowledge that. Uh, the last time I shared an informational item uh, at this, at one of our meetings, it was to. It was to acknowledge that some of our Hampton City Schools students had received college admissions decisions and acceptances. Uh, to various institutions, and that pace has accelerated. So. Uh, particularly with early decision and early action notification, that's happening. Right around now, actually, this week and next for many schools. So. Uh, many more acceptances have come in for our high achieving, high achieving students. And um. Obviously, as the, in the weeks and months to come, the rest of them will come out. Uh, but congratulations to our students who have received acceptances to many. Again, many great Virginia and um, national institutions of higher learning. Uh, congratulations. Uh, and best wishes on your continued success and endeavors in education. Uh, and secondly. Uh, just happy holidays uh, to the students of Hampton City Schools, to our teachers, to our faculty. To our leadership team, to our board members, to fellow board members, and uh, to Dr. Smith, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karnak. Any other comments from board members, informational items? If not, I can't say it near as well as Ms. Banks Gray did, but wishing everyone who's watching us tonight, as well as all. My fellow board members and the entire HTS uh, staff, a very uh, safe and happy holidays. With that, this meeting is adjourned.